Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 4th, 2024 council meeting for the Village of Yellow Springs. Judy, please call the row.
Stokes.
I am here.
Devois Leonard.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
House.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here. Also present is Solicitor Amy Blankenship, Michelle Robinson, Finance Director, Tiffany Heizer is here from Shared Resources, Meg Leitherman, Planning and Zoning Administrator, and Elise Giardulo, Project Lead. We got everybody.
All righty. So we are going to begin tonight's session with a special budget work session that will be run by Michelle Robinson. And so, Michelle, you now have the floor.
All right. So this is the third budget session with council. It's a continuation of funding discussion for special projects. We can go ahead with the list that we have left to discuss. The Channel 5 for $28,957.
That was Carmen and myself. I'm getting my paperwork here.
So, and I know you guys were talking about what was in the ACC budget versus that. You guys got all that worked out?
We did. She removed the request that she had, and I kept it in the requests that I had.
Gotcha. Okay.
So this is for two new wireless systems, some microphone stands, some sandbags, studio kit, and video system for Channel 5.
What's a sandbag in this context?
It's to hold the equipment down if it's outside.
Oh, okay.
So it's truly a sandbag.
All right.
The bag with sand in it.
All right. So high-tech, yeah.
Yeah. And Ben got the information, and the quote is $28,956.96.
I guess I would just ask the question, is there, and I can't remember all the details of everything that was in the big budget, but is there, is there a standing or regular budgeted amount for Channel 5? And this is?
It's normally like $2,500.
Okay.
So this will get us caught up to where we can go back to a regular budget.
Okay.
And then there's also the aspect, we mentioned it at the budget session, that we do get a regular amount from, yeah, from the cable. So, which is why I feel good about investing some of that money in this.
So we're good with the Channel 5?
Any other comments, concerns from council? All right. Sounds like we're good.
The next one would be the swimming pool for $42,000.
This is me. This is Trish asked for this to come back. Samantha would be up here, but she's downstairs babysitting. She's downstairs tutoring, I should say, and helping with the kids downstairs. These are things that they need to be put back into the budget. One's a refrigerator, commercial style. Diving boards need to be replaced this year. We tried to paint them last year. They did not hold, so we need to replace them. And the full painting of the pool and the black lines again.
How do you have to do the pool and lines?
The lines didn't, the lines do not last because they are colored. The pool actually has been about three years since we painted the inside of the pool.
Okay.
And then this also allows us to have some money back in for gutter repair that is ongoing.
On the building?
On the, no, on the, on the pool itself.
Okay, gotcha.
The limestone that goes around the outside of the pool.
Gotcha. Okay.
This will not fix everything, but it does get it back to a start again.
All right. Council?
I'm in favor.
So I mean, just the only thing to clarify, so we had prioritized the concrete fixes. And so this is some of the other next essential things we need to do.
The concrete is about $225,000. And we're trying to do it all at one time, which would take all summer to do. We're going to do the concrete and sections, and then put this back in to be able to keep moving forward.
Okay. All right. Hearing no objections. Sounds like, keep that in.
All right. We have Carmen's proposals for the PAC budget.
Yes, this just came in, you know, at least the PAC budget at the 11th hour. There's an amendment, well, there's an additional $1,500 for equipment rental, stage lights, stage, and sound equipment for the AACW Blues Fest that we're trying to bring back as a There's going to be a banjo workshop in February, and there is a large chunk of it, $3,500 as a design fee for Eric Hen and a possible water tower mural project.
So Carmen, you said that's just the 1,500 is new?
The additional 15, right. So I included it in, it was added to the Blues Fest revival for equipment room, stage, lights, sound.
So what does this make the total, and this is PAC, right?
Mm-hmm. $9,500.
All right. Any other concerns about what's before us? All right. In the absence of hair on fire, I guess we're moving forward.
All right. The next one is EC proposed budget for 2025 of the $10,000.
Right. So this is also, you know, a neat thing, neat branding. So this is the proposed budget. So it's broken down pretty evenly, $2,500 across the board for building on education, for establishing and sustaining the neighborhood gardens, seed library. I would like to add some education around stormwater retention for property owners, you know, mitigation for property owners, watershed improvements, like the education around stormwater mitigation. The fairs and festivals, budget, media outreach, website update signage, and then support of partner environmental groups and subcommittees, and then $2,500 for discretionary funds to further the goals identified in the environmental, the environmental commission's 2025 goals. What I think that we would like to see is some education around conservation, construction, conservation building, education around sustainable materials, and how those, how those, how this stuff can be implemented for homeowners and new builders.
Council colleagues, questions?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just highlight, when I first came on council, there was some concern about our investments in commissions to better our community. And I, you know, if you do the numbers, we're talking about approximately 0.3, so 3/10ths of a percent of our budget dedicated to community building around education, around arts, around culture, around our environmentally sustainable goals. It's money well-invested. It keeps us healthy and thriving. So I appreciate Carmen, the work that you and the commissions have done. So, but yeah, just to put it in perspective, it's a very small part of what we invest in.
And Brian, remind me, I'm thinking the numbers changed.
Yeah, back in the day, it was, it was more like a 1%. So we're actually being more, much more conservative, recognizing other needs that we have in this kind of spending.
So we were doing like a blanket boards and commissions of like, it's been different, but 25, I know we went as high.
Yeah, back in the day, it was upwards of 40, 50,000. So we're talking about, you know, under 20,000. So.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing no objections, we are moving on.
All right. It has been brought to my attention that Brian wants to put economic development back on. Is that correct, or?
Do I?
Economic development. You and I spoke about trying to put it back on there for added expense.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. He's sorry. I was like, oh, wait a minute.
So this is separate from the, when we talked before?
We originally talked about having 40,000, and we're trying to bring a person in-house. But to be able to do some things with economic development, we're asking for that 40,000 to be put back in as a placeholder. Not saying we're going to spend it, but put it back in as a placeholder in case we need to invest.
Oh, yeah. You're right. Like, I'm now remembering, because I looked at the note today. So we were talking about the TIF, for example, the tax increment financing. There may be some legal costs or other costs around that. So we want to have a person in place, but also the ability for them to execute things that are going to help the community. So, yeah.
We will use.
Thank you.
See, I just immediately felt guilty. I'm like, what did I do now?
Just arbitrarily pulling requests around. Yeah, you get 40,000, you get 40,000. Any other comments from council on this proposed budget item for economic development? And is 40 the amount?
Yes. We'd like to take the money that's coming back, and then we'll just reinvest it.
And I guess for further justification, I mean, the TIF in particular that we're talking about would lead to, you know, a significant number of apartments, which would ultimately mean a return on investment in property and income tax. So, you know, it's one of those investments that, you know, we, it's not a wash. We will definitely, you know, regain from that expenditure.
All right. All righty. Everybody happy with that? Or nobody unhappy? Okay. Michelle?
All right. Then there was a request for broadband for 50,000. I just wanted to make sure we're good on that, or are there objections?
We're all good with that, right?
I have questions about broadband. What are we seeing on the return for our broadband now?
Well, right now, we need to have money because with the storm, we're down to like $700 and something dollars in the revenue. And so I had a request today that we need some more parts and pieces. So we need to put some more money into, to be able to make things happen.
And so, go ahead.
Now, when you say 700 revenue, do you mean that's like we're getting, that's just like the cash remaining in that account?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think my, I'll just keep reemphasizing, I'm okay with, you know, putting this in the budget, and it sounds like we're already, you know, in need, with the idea that we are going to figure this out. So we're either gonna, you know, have a private-public partnership, we're gonna sell it, we're gonna do something. But I also want to assure the citizens that are using our great municipal broadband that we will make sure that you are covered. So.
Yeah. And primarily, this is for maintenance of the existing broadband, and maintaining those connections and servicing when needed. So.
The storm did not help us.
Got you. Got you.
So can we use this as a chance just to check in about the process, about the way it works? So if we have 50,000, that doesn't mean that there, that that is like available money for, like, we still have to come back to expend at least over 30,000, right? Like, you could do it in pieces, but if it was, yeah, but if it was something larger. I just remember the last time what happened with this and a couple other projects was like, it was set aside in the budget, and so then it was assumed, oh, everything that is in this is for SpringsNet or for a particular project. And so, just so we're clear on all these investments, just because something is listed here doesn't mean that it's necessarily going out the door. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. And while I'm doing process question, just real quick. So on the last, the two we did for EC and PAC, so in the budget, it's listed as 12,000 for council commissions. So I think these are the only two we've had, right?
Correct.
Is there?
The ones that get it.
Huh?
I mean, PAC and EC are the only commissioners?
Judy has mentioned that planning commission might have some asks. I don't know if that's still true, but yeah, but typically, it's those two. I just didn't know, does that mean that that number will become 19,500? So it's not a 19,500 on top of the 12?
Correct.
Okay.
Judy, is that your understanding?
Yeah, no, that's correct.
Okay. Judy said that was correct. Okay. All right. So we're good? Moving forward?
Great.
Thank you.
All right. The $100,000 ask from Brian for housing, we're keeping that in, correct?
I can't remember what you pulled. Which, what did you pull?
I pulled active transportation.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, I, I think we were all in agreement that we've got, you know, projects with, you know, particularly Glass Farm and others that we want to move forward. So, but yeah.
I do want to make sure we're clear, because Johnny, you and I talked about this a little bit too. The way I, the way I heard it, understood it was, this was sort of 100K, similar to broadband and other things where it's like, hey, this gives us some flexibility that's not exclusively for Glass Farm. It's not exclusively for any project. It's saying, hey, we know affordable housing is a priority. These are dollars that could be used toward it. Is that, that was the way I like to kind of screw that up.
That is the way it ended, although I did initially ask that part of that be specifically earmarked for Glass Farm. But I'm comfortable with it all staying, you know, generically in a fund that we can pull from regardless of what village-owned property we tend to spend money on. All right.
All right. We're good with that one. And the last one I have listed is $180,000 requested for Cascades.
So I was the sponsor for that, and I was glad to be the sponsor for it. Because what, for the, for the record, a lot of these, some of these requests were brought by individual council persons. Some requests that we considered were offered or asked of us by members of the community. And so I was approached by Home Inc. asking if I would sponsor the, that funding request. So that is before us. What we've talked about is on the list, and, you know, we've had conversations, and I don't know where everyone else is thinking. I am concerned. I'm concerned about the way the need came about, and I'm not casting aspersions on anyone. There were, there were several discussions, and I keep harking back to the PUD agreement conversations, where I was more actively involved with some of those discussions at the very beginning. And then I stepped out because I felt it was incumbent upon staff to really take the lead on that without any influence by council. So I pulled myself out of those discussions, and those discussions continued. I think the results of all those data points are fairly well documented. And I will, I will submit that I am willing to support staff's position on this. And Johnny, I'm going to ask you to just, to share a little bit so that we're all clear about what you, what your thinking is. But it has been said, and I've said how often, you know, I am supportive of the mission of Yellow Springs Home, Inc., and that, that has not changed. But I do know that, that staff has concerns, and witnessed by the conversation we had a little while ago, some of us brought things to the table. Some of it received some pullback, pushback, and some of us pulled, Brian is best example, pulled a fairly, fairly big item off, active transportation being the one that I had in mind.
Although partly it was already in the budget, which is why that was easier. But anyway.
You didn't add additional, and I chose not to add any additional to housing. You know, I wanted some. That's where I went the route of asking that portion of the B set aside specifically for Glass Farm, but did not increase, did not ask for an increase in the budget in that regard. So I am choosing to follow staff's direction on this one. There's a, there's a, there's a lot that that comment, that that statement means. And again, it goes back to the negotiations that happened in the, in and around the PUD agreement. So Johnny, why don't you go ahead and share a little bit?
This goes back to July. We had a meeting with Home Inc., and they expressed it, you know, due to the infrastructure cost being a large amount of money that they didn't have it budgeted, it was over cost. And Meg and I met with them, and we give them three recommendations. One was delay the project before they wanted it further. They hadn't had signed contracts. We asked them to delay the project till they got more funding, reduce the project scope for housing. That would help them be able to go in above-ground detention area and possibly not have to move some poles on, or on Phase 3 and 4. Or they could do the storm in separate areas, you know, Phase 1, Phase 2. And I go back to, I brought a large number a couple years ago to Slip Line, because it was going to be cheaper if we could do it all at the very beginning, and we couldn't afford that. So we had to push it out, which is going to double our cost, but we couldn't afford all that in one year. So even though we can't afford it, we still got to do it, and you just got to do it in phases. At that time, the desire was not to stop the project or reduce, and Emily requested to come to council. So that is, staff's recommendation is, is the three that we gave you and that we give Home Inc. And that's where we stand.
And is it, and is it your position that, that had one of those recommendations been followed, that the need would have either gone away completely or been greatly reduced from the current 180,000 ask?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Colleagues, comments?
So are we taking public comment on this, or?
We wanted to get through everything and then reserve, so that we could get through everything. We wanted to get through as much as we could and then allow time at the end for public comments. But Michelle, how close with regard, with regard to the budget item? I do know there's at least one more, but are there, how much more on the budget do we need to do? And well, it's not just this part of it, but you all together. How much more do you have to?
It was just these?
It's just us.
Isn't there one more?
I guess I'm brown?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So that, I think that'll be short. So, so there's one other item that will, that we will be asked to, to discuss. So, so there's one other item that will, that we will be asked to, to discuss. But Brian, thank, to your point, yes, if, if there are some strong comments about this particular item, you know, we, you know, we appreciate having a vocal citizenry, and we appreciate all the engagement that everybody does on every issue. So, that being said, if there are comments in, on either side of this discussion now would be a time.
No, I would ask that you wait till the end to take any comments.
Okay.
Because part of what happened at the last meeting was that some folks didn't get to make any comment because there just wasn't time. So I would take it all the way through your process, and then if there is time, you take comments.
Are we all good with that? We just have one smallish other thing to discuss. So we can, so we'll table this for now, and then we go ahead and introduce the last item.
I would go ahead and get this determined. If you are swayed in the end after comments, you can be swayed at the end. This is, this is budget. You still have two readings of a budget ordinance to figure out. We are nowhere near the finish line.
Yep.
This is where things need to be determined by council. It would be great if you could get all the way through this part of the process before you take comments.
All right. Just like I said, I want to listen to staff. Judy is my left brain as council clerk, and so I have no problem with, with following that suggestion because this other item will be.
What's the other item?
The other item was for requesting funding for the citizen review board. That was in the packet.
With Carmen as the sponsor, if you will.
Are you the sponsor, Carmen? We don't have a sponsor for that request.
We don't have a sponsor.
Well, this is where we would invite a citizen to come, to come up, or what do you, what do you want to do?
All right. Well, what I think that we should do is make a determination on what we're talking about right now. I recommend supporting what staff determined to be the best course of action.
Regarding the 180,000?
Yes.
Not the, not the CRB?
Right, not the CRB.
I support staff's recommendation as well.
So I, I guess I'll say two things, but again, I think it's going to be more useful to hear from folks that are, really have more knowledge. So I guess first of all, I want to point out, I believe, you know, from initial additional request, we shaved off 220,000. But we can calculate whether that's, but I just wanted to, you know, kind of say, like, we did some pullback work with the idea that, you know, when we look at the budget process, there's the nuts and bolts, and then we got to think about investments that better the community. So I guess my thought about affordable housing, or any housing for that matter, is that these are activities, investments that have a clear return on investment. So I could talk philosophically about how much I care about diversity and affordability and all the things that those bring and also deliver on our village values, but the reality is, when we look at these projects, they bring property tax dollars, they bring income tax dollars, they, I'm confident that there are cost savings around utilities, but I guess we're, we're still figuring out exactly what that looks like. And as has also been pointed out in the proposal, we're looking at improvements in infrastructure like stormwater that will provide benefits to all of the community. So this kind of investment is not a difficult decision for me because the return is there. So, and in addition, we know we need housing. We know, in particular, the gap is affordable housing. So when you're a for-profit developer, then you can easily meet those gaps. So, so that's why I think this is a valid request. I guess what I would say, because I'm a little bit confused about, you know, Judy said we need to make a decision, but then said we have these other readings. I would say at a minimum, we should at least keep it in the mix, and if we're not going to have full public feedback tonight, then when we do those budget sessions, then we really make a decision about whether that stays in the budget. So I don't know. I just, but again, if we have time to have that full public comment, and we think we should make a decision, you know, after that, but I would say, you know, one option is keep it in the mix. We know we want to get that input to make the best decision. That being said, I certainly value staff's feedback. I understand this. I've talked to Johnny about it. But again, I come from a different place, and that's again, that these are pretty small investments that have returns that will last for the community ad infinitum.
So. So this is investment in Phase 2, right? So we invested in Phase 1 at 150,000. This is Phase 2, 180,000. That's the request, right? So Kevin, Carmen, Trish, I guess, are there, is this the kind of thing where you all feel like, and I guess Johnny, you too, I mean, you're ultimately saying, you know, bringing the recommendation. Are you, are you thinking it doesn't make sense to invest any money? Or is there any openness, any interest in doing something? Meaning, you know, some investment?
I guess the main thing I'm looking at is, is that this is the only clear project around affordable housing that we have on the radar right now. It's the only one that we have, you know, that's sort of, I mean, the project has started, right? Phase 1 has begun. So the thing that we talk about around wanting more affordable housing, this is the one that's functionally moving currently. So I just question for folks, is there interest, willingness, openness to, you know, thinking about something if not the whole thing?
I, I would be comfortable, and this is why I asked the question, you know, had one of these recommendations been considered and, or adhered to, the amount would have been reduced. And oh, by the way, I mean, not supporting this is not an indication of our not supporting affordable housing.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that stormwater isn't greatly, in the neighborhood, in the rest of the community, isn't greatly impacted by this. So yeah, yeah, I, I think there's certainly an opportunity for some, some flexibility, but, I mean, it's just a, from my perspective, it is a simple matter of my wanting to honor the folks that we say are, are subject matter experts. We lean on staff when we want information from them. Maybe we get in the way sometimes and impact their ability to do so. But, I mean, this is a strong recommendation, and, and there's, the, the recommendations were made early enough to where I think changes could have been made. We, we, we will, beyond this meeting, beyond this request, there, there are, there will be other opportunities to support Home Inc., and, and I am generally in favor of them. This particular one and the way it, it came about causes me a little concern, and the fact that, again, staff has a strong recommendation to do otherwise. And also regarding the budget, I don't, the number that I haven't heard us talk about was, with all the requests that we have received over the last couple of budget meetings, the number beyond what we expect, we are over budget.
Yes.
And so I don't know what that number is, and so we're trying to whittle down things to get closer to budget. But we are beyond what we anticipate. Our expenses that we are planning or proposing are beyond our expected revenue at this point. Is, is there a number that we can talk about? Even after, and this is even after what's been pulled already.
Yeah. So the, the total amount of the, I believe it's eight requests or initiatives is 460,457 dollars. Almost the entirety of that puts us at a over balance. You've got it on the screen right here. So, so this is, this line right here would indicate balanced, and it would appear that we are, we are balanced. I will caution council, though, that there's a 545 accounting number that throws us into what appears to be balanced, although I'll tell you, we are really not balanced. So 460,200 dollars is the number that we would be balanced. But we're at, so we're over balanced right now. Sorry, I'm not succinctly saying this. We are over balanced, or we're deficit spending to the tune of 460,000 dollars if we keep those 460,000 dollars worth of initiatives in the budget.
So, numbers don't lie.
Except that we know historically, you know, that we budget conservatively. We know that we don't end up spending all the things that we budget for, and that things constantly change, including that revenues grow from things like Springs Meadows and whatnot. So yeah, they, it is true that on paper, you know, you could see something balanced, but it doesn't tell the whole story. So, right? And we know that from the past where we thought, you know, we had, you know, we're in the hole 3 million dollars or whatever, and then we came out balanced. So, I mean, I think we need to keep in mind that, you know, future prospects are challenging, but, you know, we're in good shape regardless of what we do.
So, so I would, I would, as I alluded to earlier, you know, I'd be open to a modified request if that's possible, because I think, Johnny, the way I asked the question is, based on the engineering and staff input, and we did get a document from our engineer. I mean, it's not just change a couple of things and 180,000 goes away. There, there might be some, I'll call it a middle ground. I don't know what that is, and I don't know what needs to happen to, to get there. But is there anything, is there anything substantial, some substantial changes? Or out of those three proposals, does one, do, do all three need to be applied?
Okay. So my three recommendations, that ship is sailing.
Gotcha.
They've already started. They've already dug in. They're digging in the storm. They've already started the site. So those have sailed. So staff's position is still the same, even if it was a reduced amount. I'm not changing my opinion, and, and I don't think Meg would change her opinion on, on this request.
Is that because the work has already started?
It's because nobody actually followed or looked into. I mean, we did. We went above and beyond. We had the engineer come out there, look to see what happens if we, the only way it would save them money, but it would cost the village money, or they would have to pay the 175,000 dollars offset it is to put a, twice of what the storm system is on Herman Street now, but it would be above grade, so it would not work. So they would have to reduce the units and put an above-ground detention pond in or do it in sections. So, I mean, we, we do this all the time. We have to do things in phases, even though it's going to cost us money. And, and so that's just the way that we have to work our budgets, you know? And we'd love to be able to just go and spend the money, but we have to do it in phases. And that's the reason why we got the 10-year outlay.
I mean, they're obviously aware of phases because they're in a multi-phase project.
Correct.
Okay. This is where, to me, it would be, and so whether it's now or at the next budget meetings or whatever, it'd be helpful to hear from, I know that at the last budget meeting, Emily had other context on it, so I think it would be relevant to talk about it, but if it doesn't happen today, that's fine.
And Judy, if you could, let me ask you, come, come to the mic, please, Judy, and talk about the next steps regarding budget, public hearings, et cetera.
Well, Michelle could tell you the same thing. She can't put together a budget ordinance until she knows what to put in it. So if you determine at that first reading of the budget that you suddenly want to add any kind of significant amount of money, it's a new, it's a new ordinance. So it comes back all over again. So, yeah, this is your third budget session, and you need to determine what's in that budget.
Okay. So then, my vote, I would just, I would like to have public comment to know what folks are thinking about. If the idea is, hey, we need this, if you don't want the input later because it'll make a major change to the process later, then we should do the input now, okay? I don't, that's just what, if y'all disagree, I'd, just my.
Or the other option is, it goes in the budget, and then we talk about why it should come out. So is that a substantial change that can't happen, or?
You guys have to do the hard thing right now. That is what I'm going to say to you. You need to make the hard decision. It is not going to be fun. You've got people looking at you who want something, they want it very badly, and that is their job to want that thing, is their job to advocate for that thing, is your job to advocate for a balanced budget and judiciously spend the money on the taxpayers. That's the decision to be made. I don't know how many comments are going to change that perspective or make it any easier, but I think that that should happen today.
So I think that latter point is true, that maybe comments won't change where people are at, but, I mean, this is a budget session, and, I mean, we started at 5 o'clock. I'm not sure that everybody's here. I'm not sure everyone's had a chance to process it. So, but, you know, again, if, if we have time for that public comment, and, and that's where people are at, I just want to, you know, suggest that there is another way to do it, which is as part of the regular budget sessions, and, you know, we discuss it in full there.
Gavin, I thought you were going to say something.
Michelle, you need to comment on that. I'm watching the job get harder, I think. I mean, Judy, just let us, let council know how that can or cannot work. It's just you.
I mean, we can take comments, but we also need to cover the last request, correct?
Right. And the decision's been made, right? Are we changing our minds on this? I don't, I'm not going to change at this point.
Well, I think three of us are saying pull it, and.
Okay. So you don't want to hear any comments?
We will hear comments at the end.
Okay.
And there will be other public comments, and as Judy said, and oh, by the way, changing the budget after we've presented it first time and then having to redo a new ordinance is not undoable, as far as I'm concerned?
We've done it before.
Indeed.
Yeah.
So that being said, I mean, another presentation could be made that would potentially pass the hurdle of staff. And I'm saying that, that way because, again, I've decided on this issue to lean heavily on staff's recommendation. So, so it's off or tabled or off to the side because the majority of us are saying that. And as we've alluded to, as Brian, you just alluded to, it certainly can come back in a different form with a different amount or money tied to a different thing. I mean, I don't want to, and I'm sure if we, it's, it's all documented in terms of what we've committed to the project already. I know it's six figures, but I don't know what that number is.
It was 150,000 is what we were last told for Phase 1.
So, all right. So we're going to pull it with the expectation, number one, we'll get comments here in just a minute. And again, I don't, I don't personally, I think to the degree that, Michelle, in all due respect, that we might be making your, your job harder, I think it's okay, you know, for us to put together a draft budget, and if one line item changes, I would think it's not going to be all that very hard to do it again. I don't know what it takes. If you want to beat me up about it, say so now.
It'll be fine.
Okay.
We're just going to get down to the wire, so.
Yep. And also, given this conversation, you know, we. And also, given this conversation, you know, we could present the budget as an emergency so we can, instead of two weeks or two meetings worth of discussions, so we wouldn't discuss it openly until the second, either the second reading or the, an emergency reading. So if time is an issue and, I mean, we've, just about by that time, everything will have talked about. We're talking about it now, there'll be other opportunities to talk about it. So if we are up against a calendar push, I'd say we, we can pull two, two to four weeks out of the process by making the public hearing an emergency. I know that's...
I'm just going to, once again, say, you had a hard decision to make. You need to make that decision because if you leave that door open for this request to be amended or to come back until you're, until you're convinced to change your vote, well then that is what is going to happen.
Thank you Judy. For all intents and purposes, it's off. It's pulled. Right? We're moving on. Thank you Judy. Who wants to talk about the next and last thing?
I guess I will. We have a request for a quarter of the 1% of the police budget to be set aside for citizens' review board.
All right. So with no sponsor, do we let the public come up and present? I thought we had a sponsor.
Do you have a sponsor on?
We, I...
We don't have a sponsor on council.
So there's no council sponsorship. Judy, is it appropriate for someone to come up and present?
Yeah, I would say you gotta represent, take, as a representative, come speak. The home aid request is appropriate and if this, if people wants to speak to their requests, they should be able to speak to their request.
All right. Does someone want to speak to the CRB and then we will...
...architect of the proposal.
Laura Kerlis, Village Resident. I, like many of you, stood out and demonstrated for 26 weeks after the George Floyd murder. However, this proposal, which came from the wrecking, the racism wrecking crew, that's where this came from, if there are other proposals that predate it, asking for a citizen review board or person to give input. What often happens here, hopefully not to your surprise, is people are reluctant to say anything negative about the police until something bad happens, like New Year's Eve in 2016, you know? Then people come out of the woodwork, right? Gavin, you led some of that. So people want a way to give input to somebody other than the police who can take action. Now, in our form of government, we do not have a strong mayor. Often when the mayor is in charge of the police, they're in charge of the executive branch, all the departments, often citizens can go to the mayor and say, hey, mayor, you know, something bad's happened, right? So we don't have that. So people, not just me, not just John Fee and the people sitting here, the wrecking crew, like I said, it predates it. And Exhibit B to the, in the packet you have is a prior example of a suggestion on a citizen review process. I don't want to go, I could talk a long time about what's in that packet, but it was presented in 2021, it's been reviewed by 365, they recommended it to you in June of 2021, no action was taken. And really what's a little frustrating to kind of people on this side of that proposal and that effort is we've never been told why. It's just silence. It's just a wall of silence. So if you could, tell us why, tell us what's wrong so we can, so you are accountable to us, we can be accountable to the 365 group and the wrecking crew and everyone else who's been worked, has worked hours and hours and hours and hours on this proposal. Thank you very much.
It isn't that there's anything wrong with the proposal. What's amiss to me, being from here, is that we used to go into other communities where we were needed to do this kind of work, but we're sitting in an echo chamber. We have made changes to the police department. The bad actors are gone. We have a VMP, Village Mediation Program. We have a Village Mediation Program. So saying all that to say, I come from a place, this place, you know who needs a CRB? Xenia, Springfield, Fairborn. What I'm not going to do is quantify my commitment to this community or my commitment to activism because you guys haven't seen it. I'm not going to do that. So you're beating down our door with this proposal. My cousin, Philip Lawson, helped work on the proposal. I've spoken to him and you tried to use him as a, this person said that you should do it. Like, it's a trick no good. So I come from a place where we would go out into community. What's going on with Xenia? Has anybody been to Xenia? Has anybody looked at the roster? Has anybody looked at the, the record of police misconduct in Xenia?
We're not here to talk about Xenia.
Precisely. We're here to talk about here. We're here to talk, we're here to, we're here to talk about here and what's not going to happen is, what's not going to happen is coming here and telling us what we need.
Not just us.
I, I understand it's not just you, but you, what about human? You...
So folks, 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 hey!
This is not, thank you.
I've never used this, but we're not going to have the back and forth. If y'all want to come up and talk and present, you can. So I, if this offended anyone, please forgive me, but we don't, we're not going to do this.
Thank you for using the gavel. I needed it.
Carmen, this isn't focused at you. It's not at all, but, but just for example...
You guys keep coming to me. Why, you're coming to me because why?
You all know about, everyone who heard this and, you know, you understand this. Well, we thought, I think John Fee thought you were the sponsor and that, again, we didn't get clear communication, like, sorry, John Fee, I'm not going to be the sponsor. Great, that's what we need to hear, some definite, definitive statements. But, just as an example, how many, how many officers were disciplined out of the, out of the New Year's Eve debacle? Does anyone know? One, two, five? Anyone know?
How many of them are still on staff?
Zero. Well, okay, they were given a deal and gone, okay? I'm just saying that you spent 60,000, over $60,000 on that alone. We are asking for one quarter of 1% of the police budget, not dispatch. The cities that have CRBs, they usually, they usually pin it at like a percent of the police budget, just by way of comparison. And there's a professional association out there of cities...
There is.
There is. But look, this group, we're, we're at the end, we'll do our report to 365, we'll do our report to the wrecking crew and the next generation, it'll, we'll wait till the next thing. It'll be the next thing. Thank you very much.
Right. And so what I will say is, you know, budgets are annual, budgets are annual, but strategic planning in our place, in our case, will be three to five years and what the promise I made to you, John Fee and Laura, is that I will bring it up as, for consideration as part of our strategic planning. That has not changed. Again, I'll repeat, budgets are annual. The strategic plan will cover three to five years. So the conversation will be, you know, do we want to continue this conversation? And I won't weigh in on the multiple, I think two attorneys that were hired to give an opinion because I don't want to misquote anyone, but, but I would hope that the community heard what those responses were. I wasn't directly involved with it. And then we do need to, to stop, we'll go, we'll make, okay.
If there was any concerns, Carmen would have told me, you know, when the concerns came up. I, I didn't hear any concerns, that, hey, we need to work on this and that. But it addresses, proposal addresses, it defers anything that's non-probable cause. The, the board member would say, okay, this is a complaint, but it's not a serious violation. And it would actually, we would actually recommend it to Village Mediation. So nothing changed there. What's different about this proposal and the ones in the past is it doesn't allow the police department to investigate themselves and in the case of a serious violation of human rights. That's the difference between this and the past efforts. Because you don't, you don't want to put that on your police, you don't want your police to say, well, we want to investigate that. You don't want to put that and that's what this addresses. It doesn't change anything, how things were done in the past, it was the, the non-probable cause incidents would go to the, and the board doesn't have any real authority except for to review and recommend. Now, I don't think anybody really ever read it. If they did, they didn't understand it because what I hear, feedback, it sounds like nobody read it or understood it. That's, that's what, that's, that's all they do.
All right. Anything else on this proposal?
I think that we can talk about, or we should have a meeting about what the VMP can do.
So I'm hearing no effort to move this, the budget request forward. Do we know what that, do we know the math for what that dollar amount comes out to be?
It's a little something far out. Okay. Good. Yeah. I know we're about to go to the other meeting, so can we talk about another budget thing just real quick? So just, because we're just now ending with, okay, now we have a sense of the expenses. So Tiffany, the one thing in the last budget meetings we talked about that we could push you on maybe is the revenue side on the investment income. So I guess I would just ask, like, is there anything to be said for, I mean, I do think there is some level of value in a balanced budget. I will say that there was no discussion about a balanced budget. We went through the first several items, so we knew that all those things were adding up, right? So they do add up, but then there's a revenue side of the equation too, where we could look at, is there, are there any assumptions that we want to change and/or are we so concerned about a balanced budget that any of the other items that we talked about that we should revisit? I'm generally comfortable with, as Brian put it, that the, there's some flex. For example, my understanding is that the wages are set at 100% for every position for the year and we all, we can safely assume that not every position will be 100% for the whole year. So that's one example of where we're likely over budget, right? Anyway, this is to say, I assume that we're gonna, this is pretty close and it's going to probably get closer, is my guess, based on how I've seen us spend the last few years. But I thought it was just worth having a conversation for a second of how important is it to us that we balance and/or do we want to push it all on at least the one item that you said you'd be open to be pushed on?
Yeah, I did.
So it's not a big push.
Right.
But if I'm the only one who cares, I'm fine with this. I just thought I'd bring it up real quick.
All right. So are we moving on, moving away from CRB?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on. So in the, well, we're already over, but does...
You have citizen concerns at your regular time if you have a swearing in.
And the families out there?
No. You still have citizens' concerns.
Okay. Are we good with that, with allowing discussion on...
Regular citizens' concerns.
Even though, well, even if the home aid, I don't, I don't think it's on the agenda in any way. I know things can get conflated, but are we good with, with allowing citizen concerns to include that on the, on the regular menu, agenda? Maybe I'm hungry. Are we good? Because we do want to move on. We, we have a family outside who's a family member, sworn in, at least one, one peace officer or another. And Judy, you said we don't need to do anything to go into, just the, the regular meeting is just another agenda item on the same agenda?
To swap spots here.
Okay. So while we transition to, to the regular meeting, which was scheduled to happen at 6 o'clock.
3:00.
Yeah. Why don't we take a five-minute break to transition? I'm showing 6:03. By that clock, we should be back at 6:08. By that clock, we should be back at 6:08. Thank you, everyone, for indulging us as we transitioned from our budget session into our regular council meeting. So we are back. And we will pick up the rest of the agenda with a swearing in of Andrew Bluma as peace officer. We're gonna start off with some comments from Chief Burge, and then Mayor Pam will step up for the swearing in.
Beautiful, thank you. So first of all, thank you guys for having us all here tonight. Thank you to Andrew Bluma's family. As you guys know, a lot of times in his career, he sacrifices holidays, weekends, nights, and you don't get to see your loved ones. So I sincerely, you know, when I say thank you for, for letting us borrow him for 40 hours a week, for hopefully the rest of his life. So without further ado, I just always prepare a few comments so the community can get to know our new police officer. So we're proud to introduce Officer Andrew Bluma, who joined the Yellow Springs Police Department as a police recruit in December of '23. He was one of the first to participate in the recruit program, and he made us proud right out of the gate. In his first week at the police academy, he was selected as a platoon leader, highlighting a propensity for leadership that I'm sure he doesn't even quite realize himself yet. He comes to us as a graduate of Fairborn High School with an associate degree in business management. But what truly sets him apart is his heartfelt dedication to service. Following in the footsteps of his father, Detective Bluma with the Huber Heights Police Department, Andrew understands the importance of community connection in law enforcement. Today, one's motivation to become a police officer is frequently challenged, a mind shift necessary to ensure we continue to maintain the trust of the public we serve. In my own recruitment efforts, I emphasize the value of a servant's heart above all else. Our personal success and fulfillment will be much more closely tied to how we help others than what we do for ourselves. I've met many officers and organizational leaders who possess impressive technical skills, job knowledge, and experience. But the most successful of these have had one thing in common. They each credit their personal success and fulfillment with how they helped others rather than what they did for themselves. I see this commonality in Officer Bluma. I can confidently say that Andrew indeed has a servant's heart. His interactions with our community reflect empathy, kindness, and a genuine commitment to service. As he continues his journey with us, I've no doubt that Officer Bluma will make a meaningful impact on our department and the community we serve. Congratulations and welcome officially, Officer Bluma. Mayor Pam up here, we'll do your swearing in.
Right and center, sir, we want you right where the folks at home can see you. All right, you ready?
I'm ready.
Very good. Put your right hand, please. Andrew Bluma, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the Village of Yellow Springs.
Of the Village of Yellow Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't get too crazy.
All righty, all righty. Well, thank you, everyone, for indulging us. That's, it's always good to see such a large support contingent of family for these things. So now we're at announcements. Folks, we're, we're.
We've been on John's line here.
I don't think so. Is John Ricketts here? I checked earlier and I didn't see him. I went outside and asked, so that's why I didn't.
So we didn't already swear in John? Like, we did two of them.
No, it's early, and he showed up for another meeting, and I had not put him on the agenda. So we talked about him being at this meeting.
Okay.
Thank you for that, whoever brought that to my attention. But, but while we were in break, I did look around for him and didn't see him, so.
Yeah, he's not, he is not here.
Right. So I figured we were good to go in that regard. So announcements.
Oh, I'll mention a few. So first of all, lots of kudos around Halloween. So thank you, Johnny and team. I know, really, all of the village team put a lot of effort into it. Great bonfires, great trick-or-treating, and yeah, lots of fun stuff going on. So thanks again, carrying on the tradition. Wanted to make sure, again, it's on people's radar that we're having a downtown walking audit. This is November 15th, so a week, I guess, two weeks from, no, a week from this Friday. And that starts at 3:00, we're gonna meet here. The idea of a walking audit is to basically check out all the aspects of what is and isn't safe, make recommendations about what can be improved. And it's part of our initiative to update our active transportation plan, which has been a plan that's brought in $3-plus million to build sidewalks, improve safety, and we want to continue on that trajectory. So this year, our Active Transportation Committee decided to focus on downtown, and we hope to have people of all ages and abilities join. And as I mentioned last time, it was important to Dorothy Bouquet that we have snacks, so we will have snacks. All right. I think a lot of people know that John Gudgel was given a big honor from NCCJ. And I know some of us in the room, I was happy to be there to be part of that honoring ceremony. One thing, for those of you that don't know much about the NCCJ, one of the things they do in Yellow Springs is the Spidey Leadership Program, which is something that our Human Relations Commission supported very actively. And we really love that program. They've now rebranded as Nurture and Community Cultivating Justice is what NCCJ now stands for. And so, yeah, we all know John Gudgel, amazing asset to this community. And you should probably give him a round of applause, I would think. Some of you were here earlier. We have had two budget sessions. We wrapped up that with a third budget session earlier today. So wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. And lastly, so we all know it's an important day tomorrow, Election Day. I think everyone knows that for villagers, we still do, if you vote on the day of the election, at Antioch University Midwest, polls open at 6:30, close at 7:30. Obviously, it's a very important election, but I want to highlight one of the issues that is on the ballot that is super important to me and to our community, and that is the substitute school levy. And so I want to emphasize the facts on that levy, because I think that can sometimes get lost in the shuffle. This is a substitute for ongoing operational support because there's not enough funds from the state. And we know that our teachers, our administration, our other school board, team members should be supported. And this is a levy that does not increase taxes for current taxpayers. And, you know, again, it's something that has filled a gap and make sure, make sure that we have schools of excellence. So get out and vote. I thank everyone that's already done it. I'll see some of you at the polls tomorrow. And that's all I've got.
All right. Any other announcements? All right. Thank you very much, Brian, for all of those announcements. And now to the consent agenda, we have three items. It's the minute, we have the minutes of our October 21st regular meeting, the minutes of the October 22nd budget session number one, minutes of October 29th budget session number two. Regarding the minutes of our October 21, 2024 regular meeting, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving those minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion has passed. The minutes of the 20, October 22nd special meeting budget session number one. May I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of approving those minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion has passed. And finally, as part of the consent agenda, the minutes of our October 29th, 2024 budget session number two. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of approving those minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, that motion has passed. Thank you very much for helping us move through that quickly. Now, we're at review of the agenda. This is where we take a look at the agenda as published and consider whether there are, because council members, anything that needs to be added or removed from the agenda as is currently published.
So, sorry. One of the things I was thinking about after the last meeting, and actually after earlier, is maybe some clarity around, I've heard a lot of people are not sure when they should speak, particularly around the affordable housing, Lytech. So, so it sounds like, I mean, citizen concerns, are we leaving that open again, or are we trying to? Because I guess last time, a lot of those comments happened during citizen concerns, so.
Well, we have a great deal of input, as we will hear in just a moment. A great deal of input regarding the Lytech project. So there is that, so, so the same rules would apply. The comments received in the letters are considered part of the record. So if there's something to say separate and unique in addition to that, we'd be open to it.
Okay. Including it's citizen concerns?
Yes.
Okay.
But the issue is, again, it needs to not be redundant. I don't mean that in a disrespectful manner, you know, but we've gotten a great deal of input. All right. Hearing now, after we've had that discussion, is there any other consideration of reviewing, of modifying the agenda? All right. Hearing none, we're moving on to petitions and communications, and Gavin, if you will, please. It's a heavy lift this week.
Yeah, well, and we agree, so I'm just gonna summarize, because there's so many. So we had a bunch of letters about the loan housing tax credit, including from Dirk Lackovich Van Gorp, John Gudgel, Chris Westhoff, Alyssa, I'm sorry, I'm gonna butcher the name, Paulella, Cindy Seek, Alyssa also worried, sorry, just blanket apologies for mispronunciation. Alyssa Trokeel, Sue Parker, Len Kramer, Tony Dosick, Chloe Manor, Kevin McGruder, Kathy Adams, Lori Askland, Amy Bailey, Janice and John Gary, Angie Sue, Ellis Jacobs, the Home Inc. Board, Mary Ann McQueen, Laura Lucas, Sarah Wallace, Valerie Bickett, April Wolf, Jason Bailey, Amy Bailey, with a different set of information, Art Goulet, Anthony Fife, Alan Rainey, and Susan Stiles. Those are all folks who had a different perspective on Lytech, housing, soccer, that bucket. Then we had John Gudgel related to the Gaunt Park mural. We had YS Equity, Yellow Springs Equity, with their announcement, and Dino Palata regarding the objection to funding for the Cascades project. That's it.
Good, good. Thank you, Gavin. That was a very creative way of handling a great deal of data points, and I appreciate that. All right, now we are to public hearings and legislation. There are no second readings, no ordinances, so anticipate getting through this fairly quickly. Judy, Resolution Number 2024-65, you can read that by time lonely.
Do any of you council folk want to read this thing in, or are we just gonna cruise on by? It's flour and sugar.
I think it should be read in. So, what do you think, Council President?
And if one of you would like to do that also, I mean, generally, I don't read it.
Yeah.
I can, certainly.
Brian, if you would like to read it, you may.
All right. Yeah, I would love to read, honoring the legacy of willing gone and approving the annual distribution. distribution of flour and sugar to village widows and widowers. Whereas Willing Gaunt, who was born into slavery in about 1815, did, through his own wit and will, purchase his own freedom, as well as that of his wife and a friend, and did thereafter make his way to Yellow Springs, Ohio, in the early 1860s, where he became a successful and respected member of the village. And whereas Mr. Gaunt, at his passing in 1894, left in his will a bequest that the poor, worthy widows of Yellow Springs, regardless of their race, be given 25 pounds of flour during the Christmas season, this purchase to be made from the sale of crops grown on what is now Gaunt Park. And whereas residents of Yellow Springs to this day enjoy the benefits of Gaunt Park as a result of the generosity of Willing Gaunt. And whereas, as a nod to the changing times, Mr. Gaunt's bequest has, over the years, been extended to offer five pounds of flour and five pounds of sugar to both widows and widowers, all of whom are considered worthy. And whereas, as the holiday season approaches, and we think of ways we can share our love and concern for all members of this community, it is fitting that we honor the memory of Willing Gaunt and the spirit of his gift in the manner he intended. Now therefore, council for the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. The village manager is hereby authorized and directed to procure the traditional supplies and distribute them as stipulated in the deed for Gaunt Park and as expended, or as expanded by council in 2012. Section two, the expenditure of up to $1,000 from the widow's fund is hereby authorized and provided in the village's annual appropriations.
All right. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments on this resolution? It was pretty, it did a good job of being comprehensive and checking all the boxes.
Exactly. Well, and you know, every year, this is a story that gets national press, because it's such an amazing story, really symbolizes a lot about our village.
Indeed, it does. All right. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of passing this resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, the motion has passed. Thank you very much. Judy, if you could, by time only, read resolution 2024-66.
This is authorizing the village manager to purchase a 3,000 KVA transformer for Yellow Springs Schools.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
This one's Meg's.
No, it's me.
This is, this is authorizing us to be able to purchase a transformer for the schools, for the high school, to be able to save some money. We're gonna purchase a transformer. They're gonna reimburse us as soon as the order is placed and we get an invoice. So this is just really a pass through. Transformer is about 30 to 32 weeks out, so we need to get it ordered. So that's the reason why we brought it. I already have a purchase order from the schools as well, so as soon as it's all done, we'll get it ordered and get it coming. It's $89,074.
All right. Good. Council, comments? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of passing this resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, that motion has passed.
But I guess I do want to emphasize, I appreciate the collaboration with Johnny and his team and the schools on this initiative.
Yep.
I know it's huge.
And it's what we do.
Yep.
All righty. Okay. Judy, if you could, read by time only, resolution 2024-67.
This is authorizing the village manager to purchase five stock transformers.
Okay. And can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. All righty. Johnny?
Again, it's me.
I wouldn't just call Meg, but I'm gonna think you probably.
She wanted me to do this one. This is, again, we are purchasing transformers that we've already used. Some we have put in new for ourselves, some we have actually put in other jobs, and they've reimbursed us for it. Normally, two, three years ago, this would have been, we'd already got it done, but the transformers are, this is for five transformers, by the way, $38,989. Normally, back in the day, there was about $12,000 for all five. So, and they are probably 12 to 14 weeks out.
So are we?
We've been, we've been sitting on these, because I can't push the authorization and the PO to be able to get them heading this way. So we've already been, we're behind about three weeks.
Okay. Do we, do we have at least one in stock?
Oh, no, we have, these are just to replace the ones that we need to replace to put back in.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But we do have.
Okay. Great, great. Good to hear. Always good to know we're in good shape. Questions, comments, concerns, council? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of passing this resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion has passed. Judy, if you could read by time only, resolution 2024-68.
This is authorizing additional expenditure for legal fees for the purpose of pursuing low-income housing options.
That's it? My title, because we longer than that. But we'll take it. All right. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All righty. Yes. Amy, if you could come up, please, thank you.
Yes, hello, council, good evening. So I realize, I apologize, that there was some confusion in that memo. When I went, I got a text from Gavin, went back and reread the memo, and I see the confusion. What I'm suggesting at this point, if council to move forward, be an additional $15,000 allocated for legal fees, the memo could have been read that I was asking for that amount twice. But just, I'm optimistic that that amount would be enough to take this to the point of having a completed option agreement. So the update, as set forth in the memo, the update on the encumbrances on the land is they are coming off. That's been confirmed. The final steps will be, you know, the finishing documentation, signatures, recording, all of that. But, but it's worked. The encumbrances on those 3.6 acres will be lifted. And so then, now we can just start discussing an option agreement, so that the village has the land under option from the schools. That's what that additional expenditure will be for finishing the bond work, bond council's time on the unencumbering, and then my work on the option agreement.
Okay. And we talked about, it was an arbitrary $20,000 amount, and I say it was arbitrary because it, we didn't create that number. We actually got a number from schools, I think, council, one person or another, saying that what we ended up spending about $7,500 on would cost 20. So we just sort of made that a placeholder, the 20,000, thinking, I'll say, thinking for myself, that, you know, if we did the original investigation for 7,500, surely we could finish the work by going up to 20. We are already past 20?
I don't have the memo in front of me, $21,000 and so.
It's almost 22, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, there's a whole lot of work that needs to go on with the process, and Amy, you captured it as finishing the bond work, and then per the timeline, council, the village would have to be in a position to be able to make a, create a purchase agreement or otherwise have access to the property. I want to emphasize that it is not lost on anyone, you know, that this activity is part of a set of other things that will happen. But this is strictly about the legal fees that we were asked to consider, because no one else involved in the process was in a position to do so. We, I don't want to, I don't want it to be thought that we take this lightly, considering the previous discussions that we had about budget. What I see this as, considering moving forward with this, is fulfilling the commitment that we made to do the work from a legal perspective, to unencumber the land, the 3.6 acres, only the 3.6, under consideration for the bill. And so, again, you can, one could conflate it with other things, but it is strictly legal fees to unencumber the property, which is a major hurdle in the process. That is commitment that council made. And even with the budget discussions we've had, I don't think it makes sense to step away from the commitment that we made when the additional financial expense is, is not that great.
And we have it in our affordable housing fund?
Understood. I think I'm more motivated, I'm less motivated by how much money we have than fulfilling a commitment we've made. That is what I am driven by personally. And as a representative of council, I am in favor of moving forward with this, because we said we would take this process to a certain point, and we are at the precipice, if you will, of that point, but we're not there yet. Any other comments from council?
I don't have any right now, but depending on if we've got comments, I might say something later.
I will offer, council, any additional?
Yeah, I mean, if you're, I assume it's, I support it, yeah.
And I mean, hearing no comments, I will call a vote. So there's.
Is public comment allowed here? This is like a whatever. I just have a clarifying question. What is?
Matt, Matt, please.
Sorry, Matthew Kirk. And Kevin, I was just curious, you kept on saying you made a commitment to do, who did we make a commitment to? Because where I'm stating, it seems like it's your project.
Thank you for that. We were asked by the school board, and if I'm getting some weird looks, we could, we could certainly drop this and move on. But we were asked by the school board, and I'm open to correction. I don't want to say that, I can say the project team, you know, and that consisting of unknown members of, I don't think the, what we call the task force, the task force was not formed then. I saw it as a, as a request from the school board to do that, because the message was that they could not do, they could not spend money on legal fees related to property. That was my understanding. Am I missing something?
No, I think that's right. I mean, I think you're also talking about a commitment to the community based on, you know, village and council goals, so, but yeah, but I think, I think that's right.
Well, ultimately, yeah, that is who we are beholden to. So again, we said we would do it. We didn't know what it would entail, and again, personally, I certainly thought 20,000 would be enough. I have used the phrase exit ramp, and at the time, I suggested that maybe 20,000 would be one of those exit ramps. And what I mean by that is not an opportunity for us to just drop the project and walk away, but to consider what the next steps would be. So again, that commitment was made to do the work from a legal perspective, to unencumber the land, and this is what we are being asked to consider. Using a football analogy, to getting the ball across the goal line. We're in, we're in the red zone.
I think the only other thing I'll add is just, I mean, ultimately, the, the investment that, you know, if we approve this tonight, will end up being less than 2/10ths of a percent of the project value, which brings in a lot of different things. So it's been a very small investment. If we get it across the finish line, it passes to the developer.
Look, I continued it.
So, yeah. And, and again, there's not an additional expense for the village.
Oop, great.
All right, call the vote.
I am considering, I feel you, Judy. All right. Any other comments from council? And thank you, Gavin, for weighing in. So again, resolution 2024-68, legal fees and documents necessary. All those in favor of approving this resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, the motion has passed.
Just one quick clarification for Amy. So I assume, the assumption is, is that we'd spend it if we need it, right? Meaning, we know we have to finish out on the encumbering piece, but when it comes to the, the option to purchase, there's still like, we don't know what we're doing yet, right?
Right, right. But, but, yeah, yeah, but Amy's memo suggested, the solicitor's memo suggested that this additional 15,000 would get that done, hopefully. Yeah, and you're right to bring up the fact, there are some unknowns here, but as an estimate. And, you know, well, let me say, I'll say this, I mean, if there's more, I would be shocked if there's a whole lot more. But if, if, if there is some additional, and it's not, you know, some major, major expense, we would support that. And I can't imagine what the number would have to be for us to walk away at this point. But if we, it is our expectation that the additional 15,000 would fully encumber, unencumber the land, and then have us in a position to have an option to purchase. All right. I feel like we did vote.
Yeah.
So thank you very much for everyone's input. All right, Judy, I think we're down to our last piece of legislation, and that's reading, if you would do it by time only, resolution number 2024-69.
This is adopting a policy to allow use of an employee dishonesty and faithful performance of duty coverage document in lieu of surety bond for eligible employees.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Amy, welcome back.
So this is to change our insurance policy a little bit. I don't know, Chris, this is gonna be something that you have some background on as well, but currently, there are members of village staff that have to be bonded under our local laws. And the state law changed a couple of years ago to allow for these faithful performance policies to be purchased through the village's insurance to, in lieu of having a bond. So it's a little bit more of a modern approach to, to that type of protection from, mostly employees that touch village money. So this piece of legislation is necessary for the village to go ahead and enter into that coverage, to have that policy in place for any of our employees that are required to be bonded.
And Amy, if I understood it correctly, it provides additional protections of the individual's personal assets, different than what?
It is a little different than a bond. It actually operates completely differently than a bond, yes. So, and it is a better option, it's just a more modern option, and I think it was recommended to us by Pep, right?
It was.
By the insurance pool.
So it's better, and it's, what's the cost difference?
It's cheaper than the bond.
Okay. Okay. Well, it's hard to say no to that, right? And we actually, I mean, and we know Pep really well. I mean, you know, they support local governments, so.
Thank you.
No, no doubts there.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of passing this final resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I heard all ayes. Any opposed? All right. Hearing none, that motion has passed. So we're now down to citizen concerns. We alluded to this a little bit as we were coming out of the budget session, the budget session portion of this meeting. Judy will be our timekeeper. We ask each person that wants to have comments, come up, you're allowed three minutes. Again, Judy will be the timekeeper. We, as I alluded to earlier, there were lots of comments that we've received in written form, and we have read those comments, and so we have consumed that. So we would ask for you, if you do come up and speak, as we always ask, that you provide something additional that's not been presented to council. So citizen concerns, are there any? Come on, Chris.
Thank you, Council President. My name is Chris Bunche, village resident. I'm the Home Inc. Board President, and I'm a across-the-street neighbor to the Cascade site, so I can see how active that project site is right now. I wanted to start by saying I appreciate each of your commitment to this council and this village, and I appreciate from a. I also appreciate that you lean on the expertise of your village administrator, your village manager. That's valuable, that's important. But I will also say that I'm disappointed that we were not given the opportunity to speak as part of the budgeting process, as I'm sure you can imagine, because some of those comments sounded like they were allegations or suggestions that Home Inc. either disregarded advice of the village or was otherwise incompetent in project development, which I ardently disagree with. This team, the Home Inc. staff, which is small but mighty, has produced 18 units of permanently affordable community land trust housing in the last five years alone. The fact that there are eight units of construction, I'm sorry, eight units of apartments under construction right now is indicative of their ability to continue that process, to successfully pursue project dollars internally and externally. And the vast majority of those project dollars come from external sources. The importance of the local investment upfront, though, cannot be overstated. So I'll say a little bit about our process here in a moment, but just to reiterate that, not naming a dollar amount, because we've already been through that, it is important to get a local commitment to each project phase. We've broken them up into phases in order to maximize those external dollars. Yes, we do understand phasing, and that is the intent of that. So at some point, we'd like to revisit this conversation with you about what that commitment might be for Phase Two. As far as the process goes, we were very good with the level of commitment and time that village staff took to walk through the budget once we had received bids. Those bids came after a thorough cost estimating process with civil engineers and cost estimators, which has to go through a lengthy process. These are professionals that do things beyond my capacity. So we take their advice as the best chance we can get at getting to a good dollar amount. Then we go to bid. The bids we received varied. The one that we went with was below estimate on the construction of the homes, but was above estimate on the site improvements, which included stormwater management. We started to have follow conversations with various experts, including our contracted civil engineer, and through the village office, their civil engineer as well. I felt like those conversations were very productive, and some of the suggestions that were made as the, and I hope you'll give me a little extra time.
Yes, yes.
Appreciate that. We did run through each of those, and we spoke to them with our civil engineer, and I think, maybe not adequately, but we tried to communicate back to village staff what we heard from our civil engineer in terms of delaying the project, having to go to rebid, redesigning a system, that's a six-figure change. That's probably multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars to redesign, go through permitting again, delay the project, rebid, and construction costs will go up invariably. Doing less units, doing more above ground stormwater. Our view on that, Home Inc., is that we are in the business of producing as many new housing options as we can. We have the good fortune of acquiring a two-acre site, and our view of the highest and best use for that site is 32 homes, broken out into phases to maximize those funding sources. To start pulling those homes off in the interest of remediating stormwater, mitigating stormwater, that's not our priority. So we opted for, let's still meet the code requirements for that village stormwater and the stormwater mitigation. It's going to cost more than doing everything above ground, but if we did it above ground, we'd end up with, I'm not sure how many units, a very small number, because it's a two-acre site. The requirements based on the downstream pipe size were very limited, and I can talk at more length offline about what those numbers were. So, and then lastly, the idea of splitting into phases, again, doing it all upfront, digging once, and not having to dig up the site again to lay more stormwater infrastructure, in our view, that's going to cost a lot less, doing it all at once. So we went forward with the project scope and the initial bid, which we wanted to lock in, and we successfully found some gap lending sources to fill that gap so we could get going. And at that time, that was in July, the village manager suggested we submit a request to council, that this is, the request doesn't go to the village manager, the request goes to council. So that was submitted July 11th, perhaps. We were hoping for more opportunities to have conversation about it. If that number needed to move, have those conversations along the way. We were not offered that opportunity, as far as I understand. It would have been nice to have that opportunity this evening as part of the budgeting conversation. We understand it's a request, it's not a demand. We'd love to revisit the conversation of what that contribution might look like to support Phase Two, because it is really important to the work we do and in securing those outside funds. And if there's any questions, I can take the floor, I can sit down and whatever.
Well, Chris, I thank you for your clarity, and I would submit that there would be further conversation. Okay? Counsel, anything else? Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Any other citizen concerns? Yes, sir. Please come up, identify yourself and your relationship to the village.
Hi, I'm Ryan Hudgens. My spouse are two kids residents of the village. I'm back here in 2022. Hopefully, this is unique enough, I haven't been following everything, but I did just want to comment a bit on the discourse that I've been hearing about the Affordable Housing Project. Well, first, a little bit about me again. So when I first met my spouse here over a decade ago, she was living in a, here in town in a duplex, and I'd never seen anyone so enamored with the place where they live. Not because of the shops on Zina Avenue, not because of the Glen, but because she felt free to be herself here, not judged, surrounded by others who care about community and justice and doing what's right. Of course, several months later, I convinced her to marry me and moved her to New York, and then we moved to Illinois, and then Ontario. But she never gave up the dream to move back here. A dream I admittedly didn't understand very well, at least until these past few weeks. And that's when I saw the dedication to affordable housing by Springers for More Springers, a dedication that's a result of the genuine spirit of Yellow Springs. There's something special about this place that I world would be lost if council doesn't take the steps to help other people experience the uniqueness of Yellow Springs, not as a tourist or a consumer, but as a resident. We're privileged enough to be able to come here tonight instead of working mandatory second shift at the risk of being fired, or to pay for a babysitter that we may not be able to afford. So I implore all of us to think beyond ourselves and imagine the relationships we may have with these new residents five, 10, 20 years from now. I'd also like to speak to some of the discourse and just remind some members of our community that being a taxpayer doesn't give you any special status beyond the other folks who live here. I'm a business professor, so that may not be popular in my, from my position, but government in general, and village council in particular, are here to look out for the interests of everyone. So not just the homeowners or business owners who are in the enviable position of being asked to contribute monetarily to a system that they've benefited from, and not even just the people who live here currently, but all Yellow Springers, current, future, unhoused, taxpaying, in recovery, everyone. So here's a narrative that I'd like to pursue. The thing that is wanted by an individual taxpayer is not necessarily what is needed by the community. Any decision by council is not made at the expense of taxpayers, but for the benefit of its members, the community members. So let's get the employees of those businesses on Zina Avenue into housing in Yellow Springs so they won't waste a large portion of their income on gas and vehicles if they're lucky enough to afford a car in the first place. I want to finish by thanking Rebecca Potter, Judith Hembling, and Brian House for their tireless advocacy for affordable housing in Yellow Springs, and I hope that we can see the forest for the trees and do the right thing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very well done. Thank you, I appreciate those comments. Are there additional citizen concerns?
Hi, Jessica Thomas, resident. I'm not going to be as eloquent, but every year since I've lived in Yellow Springs, council has talked about affordability. We've, in turn, raised taxes, utilities, and become a landlord. Personally, I think balance is important. For every additional dollar we ask, we should be reinvesting in affordable housing. As a taxpayer, I get to see my tax dollars charging electric vehicles for free, subsidizing the Chamber of Commerce, and spending money on messaging by sending expensive mailers that could be a letter to the editor of the Y S News. While these expenditures don't equal what Home Inc. is asking, they also don't do all of the important work that Home Inc. does. I remember interviewing council members when they were running for election, and everyone talked about their support for Home Inc. I voted for four of the five of you, and I voted for the four of the five of you because of your commitment to affordability in Yellow Springs. And I'm asking that you reconsider giving money to Home Inc. to complete and work through Phase Two of the Cascades project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Hi, my name is Angie Shu. I'm a resident here in Yellow Springs. I'm here to speak about my support for both the Cascades and Lytech and Home Inc. in general. When I first moved here, this was a discussion that I heard about that I didn't understand very well. I feel confident today, as I stand before you, knowing the need for affordable housing and rental housing in this community. We became unexpected landlords, and we now have four tenants. What I can say is that all four of those individuals who are now living on our property, which is in Zina, are critical to the community. These are not people that we don't know, these are people that you and I see every day, that serve all of us with their care and attention and skills and talents. As the owners of a local business for the last year and a half, I've been exposed to stories of people in this town, again, that I did not know before I was an owner of a local business, about people who spend their time and energy committed to this community, serving us, making our lives better, making our children smile, and they deserve to also live here. As parents of two children who go to the Yellow Springs Community Children's Center, I know of teachers, I know of families in that community, again, who are central to the identity of Yellow Springs, and have worked over and over again for the opportunity to live here and have not been able to do so. Most recently, in the last six months, our restaurant has been the host to a phenomenal soup kitchen called Who's Hungry? What I can say is that I have met people in the last six months that I did not meet in the last six years. I have eaten meals with people, again, who I see every day in this community, who are central, who are struggling with housing. This includes people who give so much of themselves to us who are currently unhoused. And this is not for lack of trying, or efforts, or hard work on their part. I have friends here who are aging, who are over 60, who are just a single person or two people, who are living in a large house. Like our property could probably house four or five young people. They are looking for an opportunity to downsize, and many of them speak as the Cascades as being their only hope right now, an opportunity of how to do that so that they could offer rental housing to other people in this village who need it. I appreciate you so much for your commitment and your tireless work for Yellow Springs, and I believe in the capacity and the creativity of this community, of the nonprofits here, of our council, to find creative solutions. I was told when I first moved here six years ago that we have an issue of foregoing good or great opportunities for the perfect one. And when it comes to affordable housing, everyone is going to be asking for an option that costs less money, that has less bureaucracy, and that has less change to the current layout of the village. We could be foregoing something good or great in the search of something that will never come. I think this requires all of us to say, what do we really believe in, what are we committed to? I stand here and I say I am committed to creating more affordable housing opportunities for people who are already critical to the identity of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Any further citizen concerns?
Rebecca Potter, and I'm speaking as an individual, but I am the vice president of the school board, and I'm mainly speaking to provide information so that the dialogue between the village council and the school board is open and open to the community. So I want to first say thank you. Thank you for your commitment that you showed today to continue funding this process with the option to buy. I can also say that we have seen a lot of great steps forward, and it has been really exciting. We've seen the lien be removed, the subdivision be accomplished, the rezoning of that parcel has happened, and we are seeing progress on the front of securing replacement fields. The owner of the fields in question is a big supporter of this community, of our sports teams, and of our schools. And so there, I think, is a lot to look forward to, a lot of work that still needs to be done, and we look forward to working with you all to accomplish this really inspiring and important goal.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Good evening. April Wolfert, I'm a community member and a member of the board of Home Inc., but today I speak to you as a community member. And I do want to include some other information about, that wasn't in my letter. So I know that recently there have been concerns raised about safety, a lot of them raised about safety, about this rental housing and this proximity to the schools. So I was curious about that, and I went out and did a lot of research on this topic. I found many studies about crime and safety related to schools, and all of them demonstrate that there is no evidence that there are any increase in crime or any safety concerns related to having any kind of rental housing near schools, affordable or not affordable. So, in fact, the School of Ecology, Social Ecology at UC Irvine found that affordable housing decreases crime in the communities in which it exists. If you think about that, it makes perfect sense why that would happen if you have stable housing that is affordable. I also found many news articles about school districts that are cultivating affordable housing on their property for, to solve workforce housing problems and proximity problems so that people do not have to drive. All of this information is available. I could not find a single study, again, there are many of them, that indicated, again, any safety issues. It would be great if the people who are raising these concerns could come up with some evidence that there are reasons to be concerned about this and not just fear in general. There's also a large body of research that demonstrates the significant benefits of affordable housing to communities and to the children who live in that housing. Improved school performance, improved school attendance, it's substantial. So, in summary, there are only benefits, as far as I can tell from the research, for affordable housing or rental units near schools. And if there is other evidence, I would encourage people to bring that forward. I also just want to say that I appreciate Chris's comments about the process that was used for the affordable, for the Cascades project, and I hope you'll reconsider that conversation or continue it. Thank you.
Thank you, April. District citizen concerns?
Hi, I'm Cindy Seek. I know I wrote a letter, but I had something to add based on what I've heard tonight. And I do want to start again, though, by thanking you all for all the work that you've put into this, your comments about the exit ramp was really reassuring to me to hear that clarification. I too have been very troubled by the rhetoric I've heard around how families renting these Lytech units need to be vetted and expressing concerns about the safety of our children living, attending schools so close to affordable housing units. As someone who grew up in affordable housing, I'm sure people made similar assumptions about my family. I can tell you it's just hurtful, and it only serves to deepen divisions in our community. This opportunity may bring a significant number of kids into our village, a significant number of kids into our schools that see a decreasing enrollment, and I think this is something we should celebrate. So again, I'm grateful to all of you for the work that you've put in so far.
Thank you, Cindy. Yes, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, and I would like to speak in support of the Lytech project and village council's involvement in that, and thank you. I did write a letter. I have a few additional points. The first is, this doesn't have to be a zero-sum game. There can be youth soccer, and there can be affordable housing. And I didn't realize until this weekend that the soccer program was not part of the school, it's a community program. And just like we support the pool and we have a youth center, it makes sense for the village to also be supporting youth soccer. And my understanding is that there are several other additional places that this soccer can be played, and so I'm happy about that and the village involvement in that. I did some research on Lytech projects, too. You probably know that Lytech funding is the biggest source of affordable housing in the country, and therefore, there's been time to do some research on it. One piece of research has found that stable, accessible, safe housing is the key to moving families out of poverty, the key to child health, decreased stress. Children who are in these apartments have families out of poverty, the key to child health, decreased stress. Children who are in these apartments have increased enrollment in school, they do better in school, they stay in school longer, they have a tendency to go on to higher education, and they also have a tendency to make more money than a comparable group. In Ohio, there was a study about Lytec apartments and who lives in those apartments. So the average in Ohio, in this study of, I think, 3,000 units, is 70% of the households are families with children, 30% would be adults. Of those families with children, it's a little bit less than two children per family. So if a 50-unit building would have, I guess, 35 families, more or less, probably there would be a little less than 70 children, who would be school-aged children who would be going to our schools. Then I'd like to address the issue of, one, people who say it's not a good site and we need a mixed income development. So this, this town has not had a good history of supporting affordable housing. And in my 50 years I've lived here, we have said no to affordable apartments in the 80s at a time when almost one-half of the pop, one-half of the housing, according to the Yellow Springs News, was rental. Now about 30% of our housing is rental. And I have one more point to make, which is, I don't think that most people understand that when you build affordable housing, you have to find 50 to 80% of the cost to build in order to have the project work. So the more we reject affordable housing, those developers, those ideal, that ideal developer that supposedly out there for that ideal site is going, is seeing what's happening. And it's my understanding from our former village manager, that the Spring Meadows developer, when they saw what happened to the last property that we shot down, they made the decision not to try and do a PUD with different kinds of housing. And so we have what's now one relatively high-end, single-family development. So again, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and I found out that a saying is from Voltaire, translated from French. Thank you.
Thank you for the history lesson, in addition to your other comments, Maryann.
My name is Matthew Kirk, village resident, Southview Road, or Southview Drive, sorry. I guess there's just so much to unpack here, and I feel like, you know, it's, there's a lot of misinformation, but there's not like a clear timeline. To some degree, you know, when I asked you tonight, Kevin, you know, who are we committed to, and you're kind of like, the schools. Reality is, the schools can't work on affordable housing. That is not under their prayer views. That's why they can't spend any money on it. So really, you know, you guys are asking them to do it, and you're asking them to do it because of what, right? You're asking to do it because a private developer came to you and said, based on the map that OFA put out, there's this one parcel land that scores one point higher than anywhere else in the village, and we would love to have the best, most optimal site possible. I mean, what's better than a green field of just straight grass, right, at an intersection? I mean, that's as good as you get, you know? So I won't tell you that this isn't a good site if I'm the private property developer. If I'm the private property developer, this is a great site. But if I represent our school board and I'm thinking about this best interest community, this is not a good site. And I say that because the reality is, we're in the midst right now of making a generational investment in our schools. At a site, we're adding two additional grades. In fact, the whole project, the reason we're getting funding from the state is it's supposed to be a phased K-12. So as far as the state's concerned, at some point, we're supposed to bring our whole elementary school over there. Now, granted, maybe that's 30 years from now, but where are we going to put it? You know, are we thinking about if our schools want to add additional sports team? We talked about how well adding middle school baseball has been for developing baseball in the community. What about if we had a middle school soccer program? That's something lots of middle schools have, and something that I know my child who's going to middle school next year would be interested in. Where do we put that? How are we thinking about and planning for the future of our schools? Seems to be right here now, we've let somebody come and say, the house is on fire, the house is on fire. We got to put it out right now. The reality is, they just started this new mapping program, which is why we have one little parcel that scores as a 10. And let's be clear, as long as they continue that on any level, that'll continue to be a 10 because that is a desert of housing of any kind, affordable, multifamily, it's basically farm fields. And we just passed to put $110,000 to keep more of that land over there farm fields. So I mean, that's going to continue. So I mean, I think that we need to be more forward-thinking about this. The reality is, this council, in the 10-plus years I've lived here, never once have I seen them issue an RFP that says, hey, we've got this piece of land, we'd like for somebody to come build an apartment complex or whatever on here, and at least try to recruit somebody, even if it's market rate. That's showing some kind of effort. Right now, the tail is wagging the dog. Somebody needs to get the sucker on a leash. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Additional citizen concerns? Yes.
Hi, I'm Emily Seiple. I'm the executive director of Yellow Springs Home Inc. Before we start, I just wanted to acknowledge that this is a really sensitive and emotional topic, affordable housing, it can be really triggering. I've also been really personally disturbed by a lot of the rhetoric, as someone who grew up in a household of low income myself. And on a personal level, you know, I really support this Lytec project. I think it makes sense. I think there are a lot of benefits for the site, and I, we really applaud your efforts to move forward. Of course, it's not negotiable that it be a win-win in terms of ensuring adequate soccer facilities. So, in terms of the request that we made for Phase Two of the Cascades, I think by now, after partnering together for so many years, you know that the process is, and has always been, that we come to you with a request for a local layer of funding, which we use as a match, to then go out and get a lot more money from outside of Yellow Springs. And so for that reason alone, we implore you to reconsider. Maybe it's not at the level that we requested, which causes further complications for us, but I mean, I think it's really critical that we have some village support for Phase Two of this project so that we can then go next summer to the Ohio Housing Finance Agency and request a little over $1.2 million. They do look at the local support. I'm actually leaving after the meeting tonight to drive to Columbus. We have the Ohio Housing Conference, and I can't wait to talk to them about how supportive the village council is of affordable housing. We appreciate partnering with the village, and it is incredible for a village of this size, what we have accomplished so far. We are truly grateful. Time and time again, you've stepped up to make affordable housing happen, and when we're talking about affordable housing, it strengthens the fabric of our community, but it also addresses people who are suffering right now with high housing costs, with deferred maintenance, a lot of seniors literally have nowhere to go, and they're counting on this project to happen. So again, we don't take your commitment for granted. We respect, I respect your opinion, Johnny. We also get that you have a lot of different and competing budgeting priorities. I know that there are some concerns about the process to date. I think Chris gave you an overview. I'm happy to give you additional overview, but in the interest of time, just know that we are committed to working collaboratively, collaboratively and communicating effectively. We were blindsided at the last budget meeting after having several months of conversation. We would have preferred to understand positions at any point between July 3rd and last week so that we could have more of a collaborative process. We also acknowledge that we can, we can learn to find ways to communicate more effectively. You know, we have, obviously, we're imperfect. So, to be clear, though, we did delay the project, which was Johnny's recommendation, from April to October, to undergo rigorous value engineering with our development team. We considered a number of potential redesign options, which we communicated about. Phasing won't work on the site logistically, according to our builders. I'm happy to get more information about that. So it's not just a financial consideration, it's a, where does the dirt go, where does the equipment sit? We also, I think, I think our key difference, Johnny, if I understand correctly, is that we are not in the business of reducing the number of units without turning over every possible leaf. This stuff is really hard, it's complicated, people are counting on it, the demand is growing, there is an affordable housing crisis in this community, and so we don't want to reduce the scope of the project without first coming to council and saying, can we move this forward together? Moving forward, you know, there are always surprises in development, and particularly underground, Johnny, I'm sure you can attest to that. What matters is what happens next. So we are committed to this project, we are not going to give up, and our local seniors are counting on it. Our weekly calls have doubled since the site sign went up. Seniors are really counting on this to move forward, and we currently have, as you know, over 350 households on our rental interest list. Not all of those are seniors, but at least half of them are. You, the village, and that includes the leadership of Judy, Johnny, Kevin, Gavin, Carmen, Brian, and Trish, are our most important funding, are our most important partners to meet the long-term affordable housing needs in the village of Yellow Springs. That's, that's why we were created. Home Inc. was created at the recommendation of council in 1998.
You're now at six minutes.
To work on these issues. So, to summarize, a local layer of funding is critical to securing financial support through the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. We plan to go in next summer to secure that funding. This process is going to entail us coming to you for each project phase, Phase One, Two, Three, and Four, to talk about a local layer of commitment, which we can then go out and get millions of dollars with because we're working together to meet these needs. This project is our top priority. We've already made commitments, a commitment to this project moving forward, so to stop now would cause a lot of difficulty in terms of securing the funds we need to get Phase Two moving forward. And for Phase Two, we've already secured donated land, a pre-development grant through the finance fund, construction and permanent loans through Wright-Patt Credit Union, and we have a pending application to the Federal Home Loan Bank of Cincinnati. With your funding commitment, it will fill the gap between these sources alongside securing more than $1.2 million from OFA, from the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. We're open to a lesser amount. It would require additional creative funding sources, it could cause project delays. We have this sort of vague line item that is just other foundation money that goes into some of our projects. We're willing to, to meet you where you are, but we're really hoping that this conversation will be continued, and we urge you to reconsider it. This is a very real project, and our community is counting on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Good evening. My name is Kevin McGruder. I'm a history professor at Antioch College. I'm also on the board of Yellow Springs Home Inc. Speaking as an individual, but not, not on behalf of Home Inc. But I am bringing the perspective of both working in affordable housing since I graduated from college in 1979, full-time for about 20 years, but also my perspective as a historian. Cities in the mid-1800s began to compartmentalize to some extent. Before that, you look at most cities, poor people and rich people didn't live that far apart, but as transportation improves, they become separated, and you begin to get exclusive neighborhoods, exclusive cities. Yellow Springs didn't do that. William Mills built a mansion in the middle of town, but he didn't build a wall, he had it open, and the grounds were landscaped. His father didn't, thought he was a fool for doing that, but he did. Everybody could go there. And I'm working on a project now, looking at Yellow Springs' race in real estate, 1840 to the present. And Yellow Springs remained committed to what we would now call diversity. And I think what we're struggling with now is what happens when the real estate market gets hot, and we have this stated commitment. I was on the village manager's housing advisory board that completed the needs assessment in 2018, and the reason that was done, that Bowman was asked to lay out to this, to the village, what will this village look like if we don't intervene? And what it would look like is an exclusive, higher-income community. And we said that we want something different. Over 500 people answered surveys as part of that process, and a vision was created. Council approved that vision for diverse housing. And so I've seen online when people ask, well, why is the village putting in money for this? The market does not build affordable housing. The market builds the housing that's coming up now, and there's nothing wrong with that, but that's the way it works. And so if the village or other cities don't put in some money, often it's not going to get built. And Frederick Douglass has a speech where he talks about people who want crops without plowing up the ground. And we want, it seems like we want to be seen as a diverse community, but we don't want to take the steps of putting in some money. We're not paying for it all, we're not being asked to pay for it all, but we're asked to put a slice in so other funders can see the commitment that we have. And without that, that makes it harder to get that other funding. So I really encourage you to continue to make that commitment to affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGruder. Additional citizen concerns?
Hi, I'm Lori Askeland. I live on Spillan Road, and I am not a member of Home Inc. board or staff, and I never have been. I have been a supporter of Home Inc. my whole time here, and I was on village council, and one of my favorite things was to do the William Gaunt, Willing Gaunt flour and sugar delivery every year. It's a very feel-good story. But the spirit of Willing Gaunt is, is sacrificial, right? And investment, right? It's both of those things. And putting the money in now, I appreciated Brian's point, that you put the money in now in a project like this, and it comes back to you. This is not a donation, it's an investment that will return, and it returns, obviously, in ways that are non-monetary, but it will return in ways that are ethically responsible. So I assume, I haven't looked at the budget, so I don't know exactly what the buffer is right now in the general fund, but I assume there is a, there is a buffer. I urge you to give to Phase Two, you've already broken ground on this, why not make it the best it can be? And so I plead, I urge you to support the Cascades project in the budget.
Thank you, Lori. Additional citizen concerns? Council, anything to add before we move on? All right, hearing none, we're closing citizen concerns and moving on to, well, there are no special reports, so we'll move to the managers' report.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Meg has received 11 new building permits and one commercial fire alarm permit, and let's see here, if you all have seen that Brian mentioned about trick-or-treat, there was an absolute, a lot of kids and adults as well, passing out candy and receiving candy. Me and my wife drove around, we gave out little blueberry muffins. And actually, the teenagers liked the blueberry muffins better than the candy bars. But you wasn't allowed to have none. So they also had a trick-or-treat, first one that they had here was attended very heavily, and we're going to be, keep doing that as, as it goes on. Quarter, financial. Quarter, quarter, financial and supplemental will be coming next week. We had to tweak a couple of things, and we just ran out of time. We did not, with everything else going on, we, we ran out of time, so we pulled out for this week. November 4th today, you may have seen, if you got to Civic Plus, or if you, on Facebook, you'll see something new that we put out with what's happening in public works for the week. So, that'll be coming out every week, so you'll know if there's street sweeping, if there's electric jobs in your neighborhood, if there's water going, be shut off. That's where you're going to get your weekly update on what's coming, and it'll be every Monday morning. Ben will be sending it out. So, if you're not on Civic Plus, it'll show you how to get on Civic Plus as well. Utility roundup will start back up again this month. So, we have narrowed it down with Carmen and some other people helped to be able to get it back up and running. So, we will be opening it up this month. EPA, they got some more information. They're ready to send it back for the statement of basis for the Renee property, so at least it moved to another phase in the project. So, that's always a good thing to be able to at least get some movement somewhere out there. Sure, relining for the Northwood area will be starting on November 11th. And there will be messaging and message boards at each entrance of the plot, so you'll know when and where it's coming. So, just so you are aware, you act like you got a question.
Well, I, I, you reminded me of a note, and, and I'm glad, what I wrote was sore relining, emphasizing non-toxicity.
Yes. So, you will, you'll smell, you could possibly smell the plastic that is hardening. It's a resin, and it is non-toxic. The big thing is, is to make sure that you run your water prior to us being there, to make sure if you got a leak-in trap or something, that your trap is full, and it's, some of it's under the sink, some of it's under the ground, but you make sure that flush your commode, make sure you get your trap full, and it keeps air from blowing back up in it, and it keeps the smell out as well.
So, techie question. Can Civic Plus messages be localized based on where folks live? My point is, I'd like for these folks to get some reminders. I know the signs will be out there, but just to minimize the alarm where folks walk into their home and smell something weird.
We will be, if they actually go into that plot, there'll be a big message board. It's four foot by six foot, it's flashing to all of us who are here. We will be sending out some other information, but Civic Plus can't do that actual area, so we're going, we'll figure something out.
Well, even if it's just about that area, but all of us get it, I think some, I think it just, it would, you could just avoid a few phone calls.
I actually believe Ben is working on it with Tanner Bussie already, so.
Okay. So, thank you.
The other thing is, you may have seen it, I believe it was supposed to go out today. The flashing signs will be going out on Dayton Street to let people know that we're changing Dayton Street, starting at Kenham Hamilton Way to 25 miles per hour. So, we're going to give you a pre-warning, pre-notice for about a week, and then it'll have signs up, and then the force note will soon follow after that.
Right, the 25.
The flashing 25s will be going up this week. So, now let me go to the bad news. Some people don't like speed bumps. So, what do they do? They decided to spill, or steal, not spill, they decided to steal them in the middle of the night. They was caught on Ring camera. They're being investigated. But yes, we had one stole at Wright Street, North Wright Street. We did recover that one, but we're still looking at the camera footage to see, so we can go to the next steps with that one. The one on Fairfield was stole between 1:00 and 5:00 in the morning, caught on Ring camera. So, the police will probably be coming to visit you pretty soon. But just so you know, we got the message. So, we actually have real speed bumps coming to Fairfield. And instead of one, they'll be three. And they will be coming probably in the next two weeks. So, you won't be able to steal them. You'll just have to go around them if you don't like driving over them. So, but they will be speed, they'll be speed humps. So, they will be driver-friendly. But the main message is, is they were put out there to slow you down. And taking them is just, it's wrong, number one. It's government property you stole it, but you're, just because you don't want to slow down, you decide to take matters and tools into your own hands.
Right.
So, and harassing the neighbors in that neighborhood is not a good thing either. So, if you want to return them, we can talk. Because it is like $3,200 worth of property that was stolen. So, fast forward to the meters, and I did not get this in the packet, sorry, but this is what the, I laid all these at your desk. We have done the first two phases of the meters where it says, hey, we urgently, we want you to call. We put out messages. Now, the next step is, this is your final notice, we're going to get your attention by shutting your water off. So, just so you guys know, we still have 500 meters inside that need to be changed, and we cannot get people to actively call us, so we're going to have to get their attention. So, just so you know, word of that step, we're going to try to put out some more messaging before we do this, but in order to complete the job, we need to be able to get the meters.
Now, are these, will these be placed at the residence?
These will be placed at the residence, just like the first two have been hanging on the doors. These will be in the same location. So, we'll also get some messaging out on Facebook and Civic Plus. We're not going to do a hyper-reach, that's for emergencies only. So, we just need to get people to let us in to change it. That's all we got to do. So, Samantha's been pretty busy. She had an average of 25 youth per day. She's had 20 dinners at night for the kids. And then she wound up taking some kids to Kings Island with the street fair funds, and she took a total of 38 kids to Halloween at Kings Island. So, they have been very busy. There's a lot of good pictures on there. She, she's done a fantastic job down there. I talked about the trunk-or-treat on there. Digital media is going very well. You'll see probably in the next couple of weeks, they will be, Ben's area will be changed over there to where it'll look a lot cleaner and be able to help him out, so he can do multiple things over there.
Is Ben getting a new stool?
He's not getting a new stool. He's not allowed to sit. So, that's all I have for.
I tried to. So, all right. Counsel, any comments or questions regarding the managers' report?
So, Johnny, just to follow up, because we haven't had a chance to check or to follow up on it. So, are we moving forward with that emissions inventory thing with, in VRPC?
Yes, I haven't gone back.
Okay. And then are you the lead?
We'll work.
Okay.
We'll get together on that.
Cool. All right, I'll let Matt know.
Okay.
And by the way, for the rest of council, the consultant does all the heavy lift. Our obligation is two to three meetings with the consultant, so.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that, Brian. Yeah. So, that was the managers' report. Now, new business, and somebody named Burns.
It's me again. So, the task force met, Brian, myself, and the others, Meg, and all the other folks. And so, the, Brian, I can't remember, I think we were just saying that where we are now, and Amy already gave the update, the RFP is on hold until we get some more permanent information. And we're still moving the process forward. There's really nothing new to discuss at this time.
Okay.
Other than the ball's rolled probably about two blocks forward.
Okay. Forward is good, Brian.
Sure. Yeah, I get, I think the only thing is, I mean, we know we're waiting on the appraisal. And then, just to confirm, I think council has said, once the RFP is ready to go out, you guys are able to put it out there, right? I mean, we don't need to wait till our next meeting?
If, correct. If we have all the, the eyes dotted and the teeth crossed, then pull that.
Yeah, and, because I think, you know, we haven't really gotten, my understanding is, Meg, we didn't really get any feedback, so we've got a document, and then we just need to figure out that appraisal thing, I think.
And I'm hoping to have it by Wednesday.
Cool. So, maybe we can still put it out on the 11?
We'll see.
Okay.
Yeah, so, last council meeting, you had asked us to kind of give the RFP, put the RFP out there and wait for comments, and if anyone had any comments or suggestions. I just wanted to state that we did that, and I hadn't received anything through Judy that, for any changes to it. So, if council's good with, to go, and we get the appraisal and the option signed, then we can go ahead and release it, the RFP, right? I think that's exactly what you just said.
Yeah.
Exactly what you just said.
Yeah. And I was also going to say, I did do some research on that 75% plus being two-plus bedrooms that we have in preferences, and that is, that is doable for a light tech project.
Yeah. Well, I guess just a caveat that I wouldn't, I would hope to be able to lean on the you and Carmen, the designated representatives, to like probably have one or two more looks at it, and our, you know, our attorney with our attorney before we release it. I wouldn't say it's like ready to go out today.
Yeah.
And we want to run it by the team.
Sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, maybe just while you're, so what was in the packet was just the same as the last one, right?
It was.
Okay, I was just making sure. So, there's several things where there's like, you know, spaces, and I mean, so just so we're all, like it's.
Because we don't know yet.
Yeah. Or there's stuff that needed to be filled in that we just hadn't fully pulled up, left the verbiage in. Okay, just making sure. But we know that the lien was removed.
Yeah. So, we can update it.
We'll be in the paper, exciting. Anything else on the land purchase?
Here she comes.
Hi.
So, there might be, there, we'll need to give some thought to timing in terms of, somebody mentioned, I can't remember, I don't remember who just said it. Someone said, once the option is signed, then we can issue the RFP. That might be, that's going to be challenging timing, because the, in order to reach an agreement on the option, there's going to have to be discussions about price, the value of land, and other terms. And I would anticipate that being discussed at the next council meeting. So, we'll, we'll have to give that some thought in terms of what that means.
That's appropriate, and I think based on the, based on the time estimate for the appraisal, which we don't have yet, I think three weeks was what we were looking at.
I gave him some more information on Friday, and he said he was hoping to have it to me by Wednesday.
Okay. All right. So, I think, I think, thank you, Amy, for that. And it's good to know, we're good to be reminded that, that the timeline is challenging. Well, Johnny, now it's a new business. Yeah. And I thought, yeah, I mean, I saw the report and tried to go through some of it. I thought we typically had somebody from AMP present, whether we went through this.
Okay, so I, I put a bunch of information in there, but really what is, the meat of the thing is, they did come, they did present saying the Blue Creek was, or we was losing one of them this year in October of '25. This is to replace that one. And instead of replacing it in full because of the REX, we're asking council to approve media 0.8 megawatts versus 1.6. That way, we can take the other 0.8 and invest in, or try to find something with REX that will help offset the capital improvement that needs it. This was a good look when it was first talked about as a 20-year option, and we was going to get REX. By the time they got it all negotiated, it come back to green E-Rex, and the price was not as, as good as they thought it was going to be. So, I did reach out to John Courtney, which is our consultant as well, and he recommended along with me 0.8. And I talked to AMP, and they're okay with that. They just know that they're looking into doing something solar, so we can get the power purchase back.
Right, right. When you mentioned solar, and I, I don't want to bring up a sore topic, and I don't know if it's a sore topic or not, but I mean, there were some conversations about solar involving the school bill, is, was that a possibility, or could that be part of this conversation?
No, because they are going to take up the majority of it. And we can't count on our portfolio for just a couple of weeks out of the year. So, during the summer, they're still going to have chiller's running, they're still going to have activities, and we need to be able to consistent on our power. So, they can put power on their schools, I'm not saying they can't. It would reduce when they're in session, but we can't guarantee that that power's going to be there when we need it.
Got you, got you.
So, therefore, we can't go into a partnership with them saying we're going to buy, because they're going to use it before it even comes to us.
Right, right.
I thought you was going to say about the glass farm, I will tell you, there'll be another memo coming. Transmission rates and capacity rates have jumped a lot, and I think it was 21% is what AES has taken to the Puco Board. And if they get that passed, we have already anticipated in the budget, and we had to change it, but it goes up substantially. And the first year is the big jump, and then it goes up, you know, for the next 10 years. So, anything that we can produce here local, if we find another area for a solar field, if we add on to a solar field, we don't pay transmission and capacity charges. That is, put directly back into the.
Got you, got you, got you. So, okay, great, thanks. Counsel, comments, concerns, questions regarding?
This, this also will come back next for resolution.
Yep, yep, yep.
I'll just throw in, I talked to Johnny about it a little bit. It's, obviously, there is a, there is a budget component, right? With our, the REX now are, you know, part of what we're building in over time. And so, it's, you know, not foregoing potential future revenue is something that we need to pay attention to, but it's also a volatile market. So, I think we should all just be aware that we're, you know, trying to figure out how to, you know, work a market here. And my sense is that, you know, Johnny and the folks he's talking to are being thoughtful about it, but just as we do with our other sort of financial obligations and investment opportunities, it is something that I hope more people on council will just, it's become a notable chunk of our money, basically. Think about it that way. So, I know this stuff can be a little, little overwhelming, but I'm hoping that, you know, we'll all pay attention to it, try to learn it a little bit, so that we can be helpful in, you know, managing this over time.
Great. Thank you, Gavin. Anything else? Do we close out the power purchase recommendation memo? Okay. All righty, future agenda items. What Johnny just mentioned.
It's an ordinance.
It's an ordinance, okay.
Oh, you're correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on.
Okay. And would you like for me to have AMP or John Courtney come back to present it?
I'm going to let counsel decide. Counsel, we, Mitch, I don't think we need it. I mean, it's just a minor adjustment, and they've already okayed with it. I don't, and I think we're going to have to, whenever there's, whenever there's any travel involved.
Okay.
To have them come for a bit more substantive. You all go with that? Yeah. Okay. I mean, I don't know if that was for me.
No, that is mine.
Yeah, that's, but yeah, that's, that's what it would be. Yeah, it would be, yeah. All right. Judy, do you have any other updates besides what was already on for future agenda items?
I don't have anything other than what, what's there. I did not add during the meeting.
All righty. So, is there a?
So is there a planning commission meeting this month?
There's not.
Okay. And there will be one in December or?
Yes.
All right, so I guess I want to mention gateway overlay again because I'm, I guess more concerned about it now, particularly with the project at hand. Amy, Meg, so can council do this directly or does it have to go through planning commission?
Can council do what directly?
Change the gateway overlay?
Oh, yeah, that has to go through planning.
And Brian, you're asking because the?
The three, well, okay, so the two restrictions are, you can't build three stories and you can only build, only put structures on half of the property. So essentially, you know, we are forcing a potential developer to build on 1.8 acres, two stories. It's not impossible to squeeze it in, but it's going to be very difficult. So last time I kind of mentioned that I don't understand, the gateway overlay doesn't make sense to me on the CBE side either, because it means we couldn't have like a three-story office building, for example, which could be a great fit at the gateway of a, you know, business and education place. And I think I also believe Meg said this was on her list of things to change way back when we talked about zoning stuff, so, I mean, she can, Meg, am I right that this was on your list of things that we should look at changing in the zoning from a while back?
No, I added it when you mentioned it.
Oh, okay, all right, so it's on the list now?
Yeah, yeah. But if there's a will of council to make some tweaks to that, then you can set that process in motion and it can go through, go through planning commission, come back to council. It may, for the purposes of any Lytec development, it may or may not be done by then or even relevant to that, right? But there are variance procedures for the BZI.
Right.
Which, you know, they could utilize for that, but.
Okay, thanks.
So what I would say, Brian, is you consider the most appropriate time for us to start that if we, if we need to. Okay?
Okay.
So this is the future agenda, just because I don't know when we'll talk about it, but just as a note that I think this budget process has been generally smooth. This piece around having space to talk about complex issues just sort of didn't get a, so in many ways, I think, you know, Home Inc. in this case, the CRB folks, they did what we wanted to do, which is they submitted stuff, which is, we're all, we've always been against, you know, we don't like it when stuff comes at the last second and then we're approving it and so they, so I'm just noting that I think when we go through this process next year, I hope that we'll remember that we should build enough time that, and facilitation so that we can thoughtfully engage in that process. That's all.
That's a good thing, indeed.
Yep.
Anything else for the good of the order? Oh, yes.
I'm assuming this is probably like another stupid question, but, so the future agenda items, is Lytec will be on there for like probably the purchase sale, or I keep saying the wrong thing, the option agreement, right? I mean, it sounds like that, I think that's what I heard Amy say, that.
I'm ready to. Potentially.
Potentially.
Yeah, I think those.
It's a huge lift.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather not add it until we know that it's coming because we can add it at agenda planning. If we don't have anything by agenda planning, it's probably not going to make the next meeting.
And I'm not in that, so I guess you guys will all know now, but that's what I think.
Okay.
Duly noted.
For the record, we all know what Meg thinks.
And where are we in the cycle of agenda planning? Who's done the last?
I think it's time for another.
I have one more.
Yep. And then Brian?
Maybe, I mean, it's, it's not happening in the next two weeks, I at least know that, so.
Yeah, no, so, but, yeah.
But I think I, I feel like I'm coming up.
Brian is due some.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, Trish, the next two.
So it's two at a time, two, doing like a month?
A month, effectively.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. Anything else for the good of the order? Meg?
All right, hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All those favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed, we are adjourned.